Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us for our September 16th, 2025 York City Council meeting. At this time, we open it up for public comment for non-agenda items only.
We have one person.
Now, I believe we have one person?
Yep. I don't know.
Hello, guys.
Did you?
Mm-hmm. That's it.
Okay. Hi, so my name is Stephen Martinez. I'm the executive director for the York County SPCA. And I understand that I only have five minutes to speak, but I am going to be meeting with each individual council member to go into more detail about this presentation. So I won't be able to get hit everything, but I'll try to provide the high-level overview. So the main reason why I'm here to present is to let you all know, just to inform you, that we're increasing the contract amounts for the city this year, and it's going to be a really big increase. And so our contracts probably haven't been on your radar because the amounts have been so small that it wouldn't be something that would be like brought to the council for a specific look and vote. But now we're going to be increasing it to above that threshold, to above that, I think it's like $70,000 or $80,000 threshold, that it is going to like, you're going to want to take a closer look and approve or not approve it. So the contract amount that we'll be requesting this year is going to be $150,000. And so the details that I wanted to give today is like, what are you getting for the money that you're paying for? And so the first place that I would start just to provide just some general basic information is that the York County SPCA provides an essential service that ensures public health and safety. So the amount that you pay to us isn't a donation. So when I speak to people, I really wear two hats. If I'm in front of an individual donor, I'm speaking with my nonprofit hat on. When I'm speaking to an elected official, I'm wearing a service provider hat. So I'm a service provider, and we provide a service, and you pay a fee for that service. And so the service that we're providing is, again, an essential service that's ensuring public health and safety. So what's an example of what do I mean by that? What are the basic government function stuff that you're paying for versus the rest of the nonprofit stuff that we do? So the government pieces that we're doing are the most basic one is that we're housing all the community pets. So we are literally the only animal shelter for the entire county. All of our community's pets are funneling into that one single building, and our job is to identify life outcomes for them all. That's the nonprofit piece. From the government's perspective, you need a place to house your animals. That's it. And so we are that solution. Another thing that we're providing is we enforce law. We're enforcing Title 18 Cruelty and Neglect. So we employ a police officer. He's employed at a nonprofit organization, and we enforce law. So when police, so over 70% of households have a pet in them, and when police get into situations that involve pets, if the main situation is cruelty and neglect, we're leading that investigation. If it's not, we're supporting the investigation because they're trained on human stuff and know how to handle human equipment. We're trained on animal stuff and have animal equipment. So we're also controlling pet population growth rates through an aggressive spade neuter program. If our spade neuter efforts were to disappear tomorrow, I promise you our communities would be overrun with animals, with cats, and it would be a giant nuisance and also a health threat as well because we're vaccinating these animals for zoonotic diseases like rabies. So these are examples of the government function services that we provide that your contract fees are paying for. It's not the rest of the stuff that we do as a nonprofit organization. And so we're increasing our fees in a really big way for a couple of reasons. The main reason is because the demand on our services is skyrocketing. It's like we had a 35% increase in stray animals come in three years ago, 22% the year before, last year, an 11% increase. These are big numbers. And a third of our intake comes from the city. So we serve the whole county, and a third of our business comes from the city itself. Our operating budget is over $5 million. And if you think about our operating budget as $5 million, and then the fee you're paying for is $150,000, it's a real small percentage of the actual cost of operating the York County SPCA. And so the last thing I'll share with whatever minutes, seconds I probably have left is that we held municipal working groups to guide my thinking on how we structure our fees, and I would encourage the city to participate in these working groups. And one of the questions that was raised at these working groups is what is the bare bones minimum that government has to pay for? What does that number look like? And so we ran the analysis, and we brought that to the working group, and that number is $1.2 million, is the bare bones minimum that it takes to operate an animal shelter. And all that is, is that you just, you bring your dogs to the shelter, and we have a legal required 48-hour hold. You're required to hold animals for 48 hours, and then we could potentially euthanize them. So if you just round up all the animals, bring them to the shelter, and euthanize them after two days, which is a terrible situation that we would not want to do. But I'm just saying the bare bones minimum, it still is going to cost you $1.2 million to do that. And again, our fee is $150,000. So there's no scenario that anybody can conceive of where government can do it, like run an animal shelter for less than what our contract fees are. So I'm trying to demonstrate to you that it's of value. It's a valuable service to taxpayers because you're required to demonstrate to your taxpayers that you're doing right by their money. And there's no scenario that we can conceive of that where government could ever do it cheaper. So this is a successful public-private partnership that we're engaged in, and I hope that you value that partnership. And we'll continue to sign your agreements and pay the fees because we certainly want to serve your animals. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Up next, we have Mr. Mike Johnson here with us. Thank you.
Want one?
I got one. I'll take one if you have one for me. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Mike Johnson. I think I know many of you. Nice to be here again. I was here a few months ago to talk about the same topic. I'm sorry I'm back, but the problem still exists. So I wanted to make a few comments to you. First of all, I handed out a map to you. Not that you haven't seen a map of York before, but this is, and I shaded in on here the two large RS1 areas. Down in the bottom right is Springdale, you see. And of course, you know where that is, up near the hospital. And then in the upper left is a larger geographic area. Fireside is also an RS1 area. There are two smaller, very small RS1 areas I didn't shade in on here. But this is what we're here to talk about briefly, and that is RS1. So we are in Springdale in an RS1 district. And what has happened since the last time I was here, if I'm recounting this accurately, there were continued discussions between the owner of 101 East Spring and Sperry, which is at the corner of Duke and Spring and Sperry, a large house on the corner there. And the discussions, I understand that they have been having with the zoning officer. There has been a ruling, a decision. I don't know whether it's in writing or is it permitted exactly what it is, but by the zoning officer, that what they are asking for would be approved. That is, by the zoning officer would be approved. And what they're asking for, and this has been advertised openly on the internet for quite a while. Originally, they had, this is a big house, okay? They had, I think it was eight bedrooms that they wanted to convert into eight rooming units in the RS1 area. That has shrunk back now to, it's either two or three. I'm not sure that they are asking or that they did ask, and I assume, I think, got the approval of the zoning officer to allow them to have renters who are paying rent, obviously, in the property. And I would assume that this will be, we are appealing, we, the Springdale Neighborhood Association, and the neighbors immediately around this property are appealing the decision of the zoning officer. So that'll sort of be the next step that will come along. What this does really, I don't want to get into the zoning specifics because that's really for the zoning hearing board to hear, and we'll be discussing that there. What we're really concerned with is that in this limited, single-family area, they are apparently have been approved to do something which is, I don't think the language could be any clearer in the zoning ordinance, that it is not allowed. For whatever reason, whether it was accidental or, I don't know what it is. I'm sure we'll continue to have discussions with the zoning officer, and presumably it will come before the board. But they basically, I had to cut my, I'm not going to get into the zoning specifically, but there are many reasons that the zoning ordinance says no. It's very, very clear. So what we're really, I guess, asking, well, we're informing you over the sort of the current status. I know that you're not being asked to take any specific action, but we would ask that you consider, and as you talk with folks, maybe some of you have interactions with the zoning officer, I don't know. And, you know, try to understand, and if you understand it, let me know because I sure don't understand how they came to this decision. It is something that would be a precedent. Springdale, by the way, has about 175 homes, roughly, something like that. And to my knowledge, there is no rental of a illegal rental of a property in Springdale and has not been since I have lived there, which has been longer than I might tell you. But there is one house that has the upper and lower are two separate units. It was really, my understanding, it was actually built that way from the very beginning. So that is not, you know, really a variation. So it's a variance, it's a use variance, which is, you know, is the strongest type of variance for someone to ask for. And we really hope that this doesn't set this precedent. I, you know, when I moved into Springdale, I looked at all the big houses there, and I said, golly, who's ever going to buy those big houses?
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, you have 30 seconds, 30 more seconds.
31 seconds. I'm going in right now. And I was surprised. These houses are not white elephants. They are being purchased by singles family, and this is the only house that is not choosing to abide by it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Oh, and Paul Dollar is the Association of Easement Assessors. So Paul, you're asking what you're doing.
Thank you.
President of Springdale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a copy. Do we have any other public comment this evening regarding non-agenda items?
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will call our legislative meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bup?
Here.
Johniskew?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Buckingham?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
And now everyone that can stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Aye.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, we'll take action on previous meeting minutes. I make a motion to approve our September 16th. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That moves forward. At this time, presentations, awards, and announcements. We to Ms. Kim Robertson.
Okay, that's better. Sorry about that. Good evening, everybody. What I have put together as represents a brief financial overview and ARPA update for City Council this evening has been provided to council. There's extra copies in the back. It essentially is a budget to actual review, comparing the city's operating budget for 2025, what the current annual revised budget is, which includes any amendments or transfers that were approved since the original budget was approved last year to get us to the point of what our budget is currently. And then comparing that to the actual money we've spent or money that we have received in and seeing what the difference is. So the first page essentially is a budget versus actual showing by our, each of our fund, our different funds that we have that we use to keep different sources of revenue essentially separated and so that we can associate those revenue with the expenses as they come in. Essentially, what you'll see from here, and what you need to keep in mind with this is that this is a point in time. So this is what is in our financial system as opposed to transactions that are dated through August 31st, that are in the system as of now. So there's always some lag in terms of some posting that occurs after the end of the month. But this is a representation of what's in right now. The other thing to keep in mind here is, as you're looking at these, is that we don't, our expenses and our revenue don't come in or go out consistently, as in the same amount every week, every month, every quarter. So if you're seeing there's a big difference as in, oh, they still have a lot of budget to spend, or, oh, there's still a lot of money to come in, some of that is essentially based on timing as to when the bulk of the expenses within that fund or later in the department are scheduled to occur or when our revenue comes in. Because there are certain things like our liquid fuels that we get from the state that doesn't come in until later in the year. So you're not, you're going to see expenses coming out of there, but you're not going to see revenue yet. So those are some hot points to keep in mind when you're looking at this. But again, the first page essentially is budget versus actual by fund with revenue at the top, showing that we've received in and posted a total of $50.2 million thus far through the end of August. And we've had a total expenses of $47.1 million. So from there, the second and third page is the same data. It's just now split by department. So we do have the city, I always do this at budget time. Officially, structure-wise, the city has five different departments. But when it comes to budget, we split that down to associate the major offices and bureaus and call them departments for budgeting purposes. So that's what you're seeing here is our kind of the main split of operations for the city. And again, showing there on the second page is their revenue, budget versus actual. And then the third page is the expenses. So essentially, at this point, we've brought in more money than we spent is what we're looking at. And we are still within the budget that we have put forth from the beginning of the year and any amendments that we've made since. Now, for the public to know, and I still do owe council, I have, we've been working with council to provide them with more details in terms of, all right, what are the numbers behind, details behind the numbers behind this, especially with expenses? We were successful in providing a first-quarter report. I owe you a second quarter in the two months. And I'm aware of that. Just have to, unfortunately, there's not a push button within the system to get exactly what is useful to all of us out. So there is a little manipulating. But I do have the, essentially, the raw files. And so as soon as I have an opportunity, I'll get that to you all. And that gives more details as to, you know, what, you know, what checks went out for those expenses? What does that all come to?
Thank you.
Now, past that, page four and five, requested to give an update on ARPA. So essentially, this is the Fund 29 we have at the city is our ARPA funds specifically. And for the purpose of this, this is just expenses because revenue, we received the revenue years ago, and the revenue that we budget for is essentially carryover fund balance. So that wasn't necessary to show. This, I just split it two different ways. First of all, by department. And then what's really helpful is the fifth page is by project. And then keep in mind, these are kind of really raw kind of descriptions of the projects. But this gives you more of an idea of, essentially, we had budgeted to use $21.4 million of the, what is it? 30, I think I should have this tattooed somewhere. $35.3 million that we received this year. Again, everything that we, at the end of last year, that we had planned to actually issue out for this year. We have issued almost $7 million out. And then we have another half a million that are sitting essentially in our process that we've had a purchase order that's approved. We just haven't actually applied to invoice to get the money out the door. So that leaves us with 14, excuse me, $13.9 million. And that equates almost exactly to the 14 million that we have in the bank account still. So keeping in mind with this, there is some adjustments that need to happen within our operating budget. Some of them are corrections. You'll see for project, the job training community project, which is under the 400 department. The budget here is for a million, and we had only approved $400,000. So there are some adjustments that need, and that was just an error in the budgeting. When it comes down to balancing, that just means we'll reduce the carryover amount accordingly to make sure it balances. But that's one of the corrections. But we have also been working with our consultants to keep us on track in terms of these projects that we have that we haven't been able to issue funds out for. Where are we with them? Are we going to be able to hit our deadlines of either September or December of next year? So we do have some movement in place already that we're working to shift some money to actually add more veterans housing. So there are some, there's the planning for our projects, budgets, and then there's our opting budget that we have to make match that we can actually issue out the funds. So what's coming up for committee meeting next week for agenda items for October is that you're going to be, you're going to see some budget amendments or transfers to shift some of the money out of the buckets we have in the operating funds to the other bucket so that we can then pay a, almost four, five different agreements that we have in the works that'll be presented for approval as well so we can get more money out the door. So what I'm proposing, because there'll be budget shifts, is that the introduction for the budget amendments will be the first meeting in October, and then the approval of those amendments, and then the resolutions for the agreements we have in place will be the second meeting in October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, our meeting scheduled, our council committee meeting, next one will be Wednesday, September 24th, 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers. All agenda items are due by 12 noon, September 17th. Our next legislative meeting will be Tuesday, October 7th, 6:00 o'clock p.m. here in council chambers. And all agenda items are due by 12 noon, October 1st. At this time, we will move into our subdivision and land division, HARP. Up first, we have Resolution Number 60. So introduced.
Resolution Number 60, introduced by Betsy Buckingham. Be it resolved that council hereby approve certificates of appropriateness as recommended by HARP for the work to be done at 237-241 West Market Street, 232 North George Street, 321 East King Street, and 631 Kingsley.
Move to approve. Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding these?
No.
Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bup?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes. And that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of Bill Number 24. Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. I believe we have representative here from Downtown Inc.
Yes, council member Sarah O'Brien, Director of Downtown Inc. I do have a formal presentation for you guys. I'm going to try to move quickly. Feel free to stop and ask any questions, but I know there's a lot of important items today. But just kind of want to give everyone a little overview of who we are, what we do, what we've accomplished, and kind of an outlook for the year. So Downtown Inc. is the organization working to encourage and drive investment in downtown York. We manage the York Business Improvement District Authority on behalf of the city. In 2018, Main Street York and Downtown Inc. actually became an affiliate of the York County Economic Alliance. It really helped strengthen our bench and really allows us to make things happen in York City and throughout the county. Skip that one. This is the boundaries of the bid. They have, they changed in 2011. We expanded a little bit but have essentially remained the same since the bid was formed in 1998. Downtown York is divided into three micro-districts. Royal Square, Waco, which is rest of the Cudores, and the Market District. We really focus our work under four pillars. So everything we do sort of falls into one of those categories. Promotions, which is obviously promoting downtown and the city itself and our individual small businesses. Public safety, I cannot brag enough on the York City Police Department and the wonderful relationship that we have with them. Placemaking, which is really creating a safe environment and a sense of place in downtown York. And then economic development, which takes on many forms that we'll go over in just a minute. A little history for you. The bid was created in 1998 through ordinance. Every time, every five years, the bid is set to expire. So the current bid expires in December. And so we are here tonight to approve the five-year business plan for the next five years, which will expire in 2030. Generates about $112,000 in revenue, which is not a lot. It's been that same rate, which is $1 mil on every property, commercial property in the historic district downtown since 1998. I know council member Bup asked me last time I was here, you know, why hasn't that increased? In 2004, York County assessed property values throughout the county, and those went into effect in 2006. So it's essentially been about 20 years since those property values were reassessed. And so that is why we are stagnant. Just a little comparison for you guys about where we sit revenue and assessment-wise compared to some of our counterparts. Here's our renewal timeline. We've been hard at work since I started with Downtown Inc. in April of '24, setting up and teeing up for tonight, which is why I'm here presenting, even though I know you guys would vote, and we'd be quick and done and easy, but we have to tell our story. And so the new bid will take effect January 1st. We did take a look at all different types of scenarios. Should we expand the bid? Should we increase the millage? Should we take a look at our government and nonprofit entities? And we reviewed all that. And as much as we would like to generate additional revenue so that we can increase our impact and make downtown even more amazing than it is today, we opted not to do that at this time. And I have told my stakeholders this, and I want to say this publicly tonight. It is our intention that when we come for renewal in 2030, to have a different story to tell and to hopefully increase that bid revenue so we continue to expand the impact and the work that we do. We've got five years, but we're working our way up there. Go through just some highlights from 2024. I'm going to breeze through these, right? We installed 50 new pedestrian and vehicular wayfinding signs downtown thanks to our partnership with Explore York. Our ABM Clean and Green team removed over 15,000 pounds of litter off the streets of downtown York. 7,000 man-hours they spent cleaning graffiti, weeding lots, and overall beautification through downtown. We raised an additional $1 million through a variety of grants, philanthropic donors, and corporate sponsors to increase our impact through a variety of placemaking projects such as cigarette receptacles and various items. We awarded over $149,000 through our Bloom Business Empowerment Center, which is part of our York County Economic Alliance team directly to downtown York City small businesses. $12,000 in grants courtesy of Wellspan Health were awarded to downtown businesses through our First Friday Grant Program. $15,000 in welcoming communities grants to different event organizers and nonprofits in downtown York. $31,000 in facade grants Thirty-one thousand dollars in facade grants through our York County Trail Towns Facade Grant Improvement Program. We spent our Downtown Inc. ambassadors, which I'm really proud of our volunteer base and really been growing this network of really cheerleaders and champions for downtown, spent over a hundred hours promoting the district. And then just year-to-date, just going to breeze through. For the first time since 2013, Downtown Inc. received national accreditation from Main Street America in the Pennsylvania Downtown Center. We're really proud of that. Thank you, thank you. Just kind of highlighting some of the economic, the large projects that Downtown Inc. and the Y C A team undertake collaboratively from the Cadorus Greenway to refitting the bottom floor of the Yorktown Hotel, which is celebrating its hundredth birthday on October seventeenth. I hope you guys can all mark your calendars and join us. Got a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for the Zion Church Project adjacent to the hotel. Ballpark Commons continues to move forward slowly and steady. Gateway Gardens, which is the vacant space outside of the ballpark next to Keystone Kid Space. That's a twenty-year project in the making. We're really excited to see that come to fruition this spring and various other projects. We're really working hard on the Downtown Inc. side of economic development, working to streamline the business improvement process for our small businesses. Will be featuring at our downtown update on November twelfth, our new Imagine the Possibilities vacant property marketing campaign and our new downtown investment guide. We're also partnering with the Cultural Alliance of York County. Our public art master plan consultant will be in town next week to launch a countywide public arts master plan, which will address future public art installations and maintenance of all of the wonderful existing public art that we have in downtown York. Number one tourist destination in the world, God, do have an update on this. Dave, thank you very much. The Portland Louvre's actually arrived at the Public Works Warehouse yesterday. They're all wrapped up. You can't see them yet. Still finishing up a little bit of utility work, but hopefully those will be installed before you know it. And we'll have a big ribbon cutting and celebration. In conjunction with a lot of partners, our Tree P A. Grant, we planted fifty new trees along the creek and in several city parks last spring with fifty more going in this fall. We just actually yesterday finalized the consultant for our D C N R half-a-million-dollar grant, which will do a comprehensive tree canopy study and assessment of all of the trees downtown in the bid and all of the major arteries coming in and out of the city. And so that project will get underway this fall. And then we will have plenty of money left over to continue to do new plantings and tree replacements throughout downtown. More, I can't brag on the ABM Clean and Green team enough. They have really been transformative to downtown. Juan and Maximo are just really perfect, and we are so thankful for them. Our Downtown Resource Center celebrated its one-year anniversary in April and won a townie from the Pennsylvania Downtown Center for Best Community Partnership, which we're very excited about. We continue to help support the police department by funding police overtime downtown on the weekends and during certain special events. And I cannot brag on the downtown police department team enough. Officer Kathy Nice, Jean Thels, who we affectionately call LT, and Officer Reiner, and of course, Sweet Victory. We've worked really hard expanding partnerships with York College. Had another great meeting with the Graham Center for Collaboration this morning. And we'll continue to really figure out town and gown relations and how do we get York College students and faculty exploring downtown more often than they do right now. We launched our new Summers in the City program in conjunction with York County History Center to try to drive traffic downtown on Sunday afternoons. And looking ahead to the future, we will be focusing on really some micro district connectivity projects. We're looking at an urban trail. Imagine dance steps on the sidewalk as you walk perhaps from the stadium to Restaurant Row and different history bits and fitness tips throughout downtown. So we'll have much more to come on that in the coming months. Looking forward to partnering with York Revolution for Bright Nights again this year. Also going to be doing a deeper dive into an engineering study on Mason Avenue, which is a long-term multimodal connectivity opportunity in downtown York. Bronley Martin, our Urban Revitalization Manager, does a wonderful job inside the spreadsheets. He has inventoried trashcans and benches and crosswalks and light poles and all kinds of items downtown. We're working on a data management system to put in place next year that'll really help us use that data to make informed decisions moving forward. Enhanced recruitment and retention efforts, and of course, more public art. The picture on there is a mural that will be going on the Columbia Gas Shed outside of the History Center along the creek in two weeks. So we're really looking forward to beautifying that as well. And that's it. I told you guys I would be quick. Happy to answer any questions. I know the, the, the plan for the next five years is in your packets. But anything I can answer for you guys, I would be more than happy to do so. We appreciate our partnership with the city and our wonderful relationship with city council and all of the support that you guys provide us that allows us to make things happen in downtown York. Thank you.
Email this to me then, your presentation. Can you email that?
Yes, ma'am. Sure can.
Thank you. We appreciate all that you do. For the city, thank you. Is any other council commoner questions for Sarah?
I would just like to say, you know, the energy and the contribution of Downtown Inc. have a huge impact on our city. Your events attract people that may not otherwise come to our city. Our business owners benefit. We benefit financially. It's just a great partnership, and we're so glad, we're so glad we're here.
Any other council comment? Any questions or comments from the public? Madam clerk, please call the row.
Bup?
Yes.
John Eske?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of bill number twenty-five. Move to approve.
I'd like to move to table this item, please, and I'll explain. In reviewing, the ordinance presented is a zoning ordinance, and it does not pertain to existing shops. However, there are a lot of shops selling these products, and residents have come to us. There have been complaint, concerns regarding access to minors at the current businesses. That said, it is in the best interest of the city and our youth to regulate the current shops. This can't be done through a zoning ordinance. It needs to be done by amending to licensing ordinances. So I move to table this legislation until that companion piece is complete. Ideally, the ordinance would apply provisions four and five, which, you know, do not allow. I won't go through and read. You want me to read them quickly so people know? Oh. No minors shall be permitted to enter the premises unless accompanied by a parent or legal guardian. No minors may be employed at the premises. The exterior of the shop must be posted with clear signage stating that no minors are permitted to enter without being accompanied by a parent or legal guardian. At least one such sign shall be placed at a conspicuous location near each public entrance to the space occupied by the business. Then at five, no sales may be solicited or conducted on the premises by minors. No self-service tobacco shall be permitted. No distribution of free or low-cost tobacco, as well as coupons for tobacco products or tobacco paraphernalia, shall be permitted. Again, there were eight provisions. These two definitely protect minors and limit their access to these shops and could be applied to existing businesses. So during this period, why this bill was tabled, there is a moratorium. No vapor-smoke shops can be approved until this matter is resolved. And I'm sure we're going to come back and offer the community a complete package that looks at future shops, but also protects our youth, you know, with access to the current businesses. Did I miss anything on that?
No, you didn't.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor to table this. Is there a second?
I second that.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? That moves forward to table this at this time. And due to that, there will not be any comment on that this, at this evening. Thank you, Councilwoman Janeski.
You're welcome.
Up next are new business items. We have resolution number sixty-one.
So introduced.
That's putting me on as an alternate.
What's that? Oh, okay. Is there a motion to re-bash short title?
I make a motion to re-bash short title.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Resolution number sixty-one, introduced by Betsy Buckingham, appointing a queen of Washington as the city of York delegate to the 2025 Pennsylvania Municipal Lead, Municipal Leadership Summit and Annual Business Meeting, and Betsy Buckingham as an alternate.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this?
No.
Any public comment? Madam clerk, please call the row.
Bup?
Yes.
John Eske?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have resolution number sixty-two.
So introduced.
Is there a motion to introduce by short title?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
I'll oppose no. And, okay. And that is resolution number sixty-two, introduced by Felicia Dennis, a resolution authorizing the purchase of an Altec forty-seven hydraulic Derek Model D M forty-seven E. That's a truck, I take it, Dave, right?
Yep.
Okay. And the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars from Altec Industries through the Commonwealth Pennsylvania's Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Department of Public Works.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this?
I just have some questions. I mean, this is a large piece of equipment, and it's used to dig holes, set poles, maximize lift capacities. Are we replacing a vehicle?
Yes, replacing a thirty-six-year-old truck.
How often do we? Yeah. How often do we use this equipment?
A couple of times a month, and we don't use it very often. And I spoke with Elsbeth the other day at the yard sale. Morris Park, by the way, folks, Morris Park. So I spoke with her talking about it, and it's not used every day. She used a couple of times a month. When we do need it, it's never during the day. It's overnight. So it's not a piece of equipment we could go rent. If we were to rent it, it rents for about three thousand dollars a day. So it's not.
Overnight? What's an example?
Traffic signal poles knocked down, streetlight poles knocked down, things we need to pick up that are thousands of pounds each. So traffic signal pole, the last big accident we had was Market in Ritzland. We had our pole truck there, plus two of Med Ed's we had to borrow because of the situation. So we'd have had to rent three trucks at nine thousand dollars a day at that time. So it's not, I know you look at that number, because I look at that number and think, Jesus. You know? But when we need it, we need it. It's kind of like a fire truck, you know? Pay a half million dollars to a million dollars for a fire truck and hope you never need it.
So we won't be buying another one for thirty years?
Not in my lifetime. Yeah, we won't. Not, not going to do it while I'm.
I know my refrigerator only got a five-year guarantee.
My, my wife's complaining about ours. It's, it's eighteen months old and needs replaced. So no, we, unfortunately, all three, two bucket trucks this year, well, between the last several years, and this truck. And that's how it goes for our departments. You don't buy them frequently. You buy them every thirty years. They just happen to be on the same cycle. So if we can get off of that cycle, that'd be great. Any other questions?
No, I'm satisfied.
I'll gladly give you all a demonstration of the truck we have.
Need to eleven block.
Yeah, exactly.
And we'll be gone when the next cycle comes around.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any public comment regarding this matter? Madam clerk, please call the row.
Bup?
Yes.
John Eske?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have resolution number sixty-three.
So introduced.
Is there a motion to re-bash short title?
So moved.
Second.
One second here.
No problem.
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
And that is resolution number sixty-three, introduced by Felicia Dennis, a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a light structure system in the total amount of four hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars with total light control from Muscles Sports Lighting through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program for Hoffman Veterans Memorial Park Baseball Field, number three.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
No.
I have a comment.
Dave, will these lights stay on, like, all overnight?
They, they can, they won't, no. So they, they're, they're lit. Last game usually kicks off ten o'clock, so eleven-thirty, they're out.
Okay, then that's why, because I live over there.
You live there, I know. It's, it's pretty bright, right?
Are these staying on all night?
Yeah, only, only time it does is if, like, when we have the girls' nationals teams, and they run late sometimes. So they, they will then, but other than that, no.
Thank you. Any comment from the public regarding this matter? Madam clerk, please call the row.
Bup?
Yes.
John Eske?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have resolution number sixty-four.
So introduced.
Resolution number sixty-four, introduced by Felicia Dennis, where the city desires to contract for services for the South Penn Street sidewalk C D V G improvements, and where as one bid was received from Kinsley Construction. And whereas C S Davison is the project engineer, engineer, and recommended the contract be awarded to Kinsley, who was the sole winner, now therefore be resolved, council hereby awards said contract to Kinsley for the total amount of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this?
I would just like to say that that's a street that I travel frequently. It's, I think a lot of people are often surprised that there's a high percentage of homeownership. It's, it's, it's overdue. It's needed. I'm, I was really glad to see this on the agenda.
Yeah.
I agree as well. With the tree, the tree stumps coming.
Oh, it is.
Some of that. So I'll give you a little background on that if you're ready. Looking at that price, you would think we're doing everything, and it's repairs. So it's repairs on the cracked and lifted spots.
Right.
Curbing, things like that. So some of the trees that, that have been removed and the sidewalks are lifted, we're going to repair those as we're going to. And then hopefully, knock on wood, we're trying to piggyback into another project through Penn Dot to do more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think that's, that is great as well. I remember probably about a year or two, maybe, the residence was at Penn Market.
Right.
And we had a meeting, and, and they spoke about their concerns and things like that. So I think this is excellent that we're moving forward with this.
So do I. I, I wish we could do more with it, but that was, you know, all C D V G money. So maybe with future C D V G, we can go back at that street again, because it does, needs a good bit of work.
Yes. For those listening, could you, you know, tell everybody what C D V G money is? We're not using city tax dollars for this, but we're using.
You're making me think. Community Development Block Grant money, yeah. So, uh, so it's, it's, yeah, it's not city money. It's federal match, whatever, and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right.
Councilwoman Bup?
Yeah, a quick question. So I remember that, that park-to-park plan along Penn Street was a great idea. So one question I have is, have they, has Columbia Gas been in touch with any plans for changing out meters on Penn Street? I don't know if they've already completed Penn Street.
I think they're complete.
If it's complete, then.
Yeah.
Then maybe they've done some of the sidewalk and this just fills in spots.
Yeah, so we, as you know, we piggyback along with all the utilities the best we can. So we waited for them to complete. Now we're going in to try and finish up the rest. And, and I think, talking with Keith, the Keith Gerber, the Highway Superintendent, we're going to get pretty far out of this. I mean, it's, you know, it won't get complete new sidewalks and curb, but it'll get a decent looking Penn Street again, so.
And one last quick question. So how long was this R F P published? Is it just, is it two weeks or was it more than two weeks?
This one was actually done twice, because Kinsley was the only bidder both times. So it was up two and a half weeks both times.
Two and a half weeks both times? And it's out on Open Gov in the?
On Open Gov, yes.
In the procurement section or something? So if there are viewers who are interested in this kind of work, they should.
We are. I did talk to a couple smaller, I don't want to say smaller, but local contractors that do sidewalks and things like that now, letting them know that they need to check. They're all checking different websites, and ours is only going to Open Gov, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council comment regarding this?
Any comment from the public regarding this matter? Madam clerk, please call the row.
Bup?
Yes.
John Eske?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. At this time, we do not have a request for any future meetings. Do we have any council comment this evening?
Administration comment.
It is now six forty-nine P M., and this meeting is adjourned.